FNC 106 Court, two Fannie Will Investors Group versus Board of Selectmen. Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Cohen.
Good morning, may I please the Court Dana Cohen for Fannie Will Investors. At issue is a reverter provision that gave the town of Dennis the right to divest Dennis Housing Authority title if the property in question is conveyed or transferred without written consent to the Board of Selectmen of the town.
That was known to your client?
I'm sorry?
Was that known to your client?
That was, I assume that was known to my client. We have a rather sparse record because of the procedural posture of the case.
But the judge assumed so, and I haven't heard you argue differently.
Well, he was, they were at least on legal notice because it's in the registry of deeds, I take it. That's...
That's right. And I think what happens, what we're arguing, this happened in 2002. Citizens Bank was the one who actually made the loan. 2007, Fannie Will Investors purchased this loan from Citizens Bank. 2008, six years after the loan was made, the town then says, oh, wait a minute, that mortgage back six years ago was a, was a conveyance. And it's our position that, that the conveyance was, in essence, a legal fiction, that the mortgage was a legal fiction. It granted legal title, it did not grant equitable title. And it appears from the circumstances that the parties treated this as not something that triggered this reverter provision, that they, everybody assumed that the reverter provision would be, would be triggered by both legal and equitable title. And...
You say it, it appears that way because it took them six years to get there?
Well, the town didn't figure it out for six years.
Well, they didn't act.
They didn't ask, but I, I think that...
They didn't act.
They didn't act?
They didn't do anything about it.
That's right.
That doesn't mean that they didn't figure it out.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure if they did or didn't, but in any of the...
How did the town learn about the mortgage?
I don't know. We don't have that in the record.
Do we even know that they knew about the mortgage?
I'm sorry?
Do we even know that they knew about the mortgage?
There's an allegation in the brief that they did.
I know in the brief.
There's no, we have a very limited record, so we don't know whether they knew or didn't know about the mortgage.
I mean, I don't know why towns do and don't act at various times, but towns put things into agreements in order to protect their lights, and there's no statute of limitations on when they can exercise those lights, and they exercise those lights.
That's right. And I didn't argue here that they had no right to raise this issue after six years, but I think it is...
What do you mean, raise the issue?
Or exercise the right.
Exercise their rights.
Exercise the right.
There's obviously context here, and it's, you know, it's hard to sort of understand. All of a sudden, there's a vote to change, to eliminate this provision? This is in 2007, there was some town vote?
In 2006, there was a vote to eliminate this provision. The...
And this was before Fannie Will purchased the loan?
Before they purchased it.
I mean, where, I guess the record is so sparse, we don't know. Obviously, something has triggered something.
Well, I, what they were looking for is, they were looking for a provision that this would, that this property would be perpetually used for low-income housing. And they agreed to that, the Dennis Housing Authority, we don't know why, but for some reason rejected this or didn't act on it. And then in 2007, Fannie Will Investors purchased this, and in 2008, the town exercised its right. And I, I think a fair inference, we, again, we don't know for sure, but I think a fair inference would be that citizens and Fannie Will Investors did not understand that simply granting of a mortgage would, would, would trigger, would constitute a transfer or a conveyance.
It was pretty clear under Massachusetts law. You could pick up any title book, you can, it was pretty clear.
There's case, Massachusetts is a title theory state, and I'm not arguing that. Massachusetts is one of the few, minority of states in this country that is a title theory state.
And we also have registered land, and not a lot of states have registered land. I mean, there are lots of property relations in Massachusetts where Massachusetts is not like California. We have, you know, we, I mean, lots. I mean, so that, it's very easy to discover that Massachusetts is a title state.
Well, we don't dispute that Massachusetts is a title...
Aren't you asking us, in essence, to convert into a lien, lien state?
I'm not asking for conversion to a lien state. There are a number of states that have said, look, Massachusetts, we are a title theory state, however, for this purpose, the, the transfer of title, when you give a mortgage, is a, is a legal fiction. And really, it's a matter of convenience. It allows the holder of a mortgage to assume possession and have greater control over the foreclosure process, and that's really all it is.
Now, practically, let's assume that you prevail. You will then have a mortgage, but if you were to actually exercise a foreclosure, then the provision, even as you interpret it, would kick in.
That, that is probably correct. However, we would, we don't necessarily, we wouldn't necessarily have to foreclose. There's, in addition to the mortgage, there was a, an assignment of contracts and rights provision. So, for example, if house, fair housing or low-income housing is built on this property, they have a right to take, to go in and take the proceeds of this, of whatever is built on there.
So what's really at stake pragmatically is not your ability to foreclose, because, because even under your interpretation, that could not be done with the town's approval, correct?
I think that was conceded in the trial court.
All that would be at stake is your ability to obtain rents, basically.
To obtain what?
Rents.
Which, which I think would probably, you know, go a long way toward protecting, well, I'm not sure. I, I think the intent was to have this, this property as low-income housing.
And why does the assignment of rents matter in terms of who owns the property? I mean, you, you wouldn't have a mortgage anymore, but you'd still have, you'd still have an obligation, would you not? And they still, and they still owe the money.
They still owe the money. And I, I think, I, the practical effect, I'm not 100% positive on. I think there might...
It's just your security interest, right?
Right. I think it's the security interest.
The security interest that you can't act upon, even under your interpretation.
I'm, I'm not going to concede that. We might, or there may be something that we can do if we have a security interest in the land.
If the, did the assignment of, of contracts and rights go with the mortgage?
It did. And I think, I think that may be one indication that the, that the parties all assumed that this was not a conveyance of title, because I think the...
Well, why is that? I mean, that's not uncommon in a mortgage transaction to ask for assignments of a lot of things, life insurance policies, and not that that would apply in this case, but banks are always looking for, for additional collateral, even beyond the mortgage. They, they over-collateralize.
That's right. I, I think in the Maglion case, there's some discussion about the significance of the transfer of title is only to help the mortgage, the mortgage holder collect, or be able to foreclose and take possession and control the proceedings if there's not, if there's some other way of collecting the money. I, I think the language is from Maglion is, "If other means are available to satisfy the debt, the vesting of legal title and the mortgagie is without practical significance." Now, in this case, there was an actual way of collecting on this, the indebtedness by, by simply saying, okay, we're going to take the rent now. We're going to take over and take these contracts over. You have 28 units.
So 28 units were built?
No, they weren't built. Apparently not. Again, we have a very sparse record. There's a discussion in the opinion, I think it's at footnote eight, that says, "Apparently nothing was built. The money was spent on design fees and things like that."
So you have the housing authority owes you the money?
That's right.
And you're just having trouble collecting it? Your client is having trouble collecting it?
Well, there's some, some indication that it was a line of credit that wasn't drawn down a whole lot.
We're not sure. That was stated in the housing authority's brief. I don't know, there's, there's nothing in the record indicating one way or another what that, what that was.
Is there any indication in the record as to how much money actually was, was paid under the mortgage loan papers?
There is none.
So it could have been $1, it could have been $400,000.
It could have been.
So your, your, your legal argument is essentially, as I understand it, that the conveyance of the property through the mortgage only applies as to the mortgage, I get confused, the bank, that it doesn't apply to anybody else, that as, that as to everybody else, it is simply a lien?
Well, I, I'm not sure if I want to call it...
Have you, have you read the case of Uwer versus Hobbs from 1842? Are you familiar with the, with the language of Justice Shaw there?
I probably did. I cannot recall it off the top of my head. I've read every one of these cases.
All right.
The, you know, the difficulty with this case is that, you know, I mean, there are, there are hybrid states where they say, look, for, as a practical matter, you know, we look at the whole transaction, we look at what the practical effect is. Is this a real transfer of title? And in, in Massachusetts, even though we call ourselves a title theory state, really what happens is there's a legal, transfer of legal title, the title is split, the equitable title remains with the owner, and there are a number of title theory states where they have said, look, let's look at what the transaction really was.
I understand that, but I mean, you know, the common law develops over the course of 100 years, and, you know, at the moment, what we have is that the mortgagie acquires title, and the, and the mortgager has an equity of redemption and a right to possession, correct?
That's correct. And there are, but there are other means of, that the parties drafted to collect this debt, and so as a practical matter, very little of anything meaningful transferred with the...
But you keep saying that, but, you know, we, any lender looking at this, I mean, essentially, it seems to me that you're saying, maybe my lender didn't understand what this meant, maybe my lender didn't understand that this was a title state, maybe my lender didn't understand that the town had a right of redemption, maybe my lender didn't check to see whether or not the town had exercised its vote. You know, the lender may have, you know, cause of action for negligent conduct against the title search of the lawyer who represented it, so on and so forth, but why would we want to upend Massachusetts law, you know, in these circumstances where there was obviously notice about everything?
I don't think we have to. I, I don't think, there's, there's no case talking about a reverter provision and whether a granting of a mortgage constitutes a conveyance or a transfer. There is, there's simply...
It talks about title.
It talks about title, but I, I don't think, I don't think the law was absolutely clear on this subject. And obviously, you know, the parties seem to have been somewhat misled or misinformed.
Well, tell me what law is unclear. Where is it unclear?
Well, the definition of, of conveyance or transfer, I think that it would not necessarily have been clear to somebody writing a mortgage. When we look at, for example, in Connecticut, the Red Rooster case, that, that involved a lien statute, you know, which required notice of a lien to be given to the owner. Well, in that case, that's also a title theory state. Equitable title stayed with the homeowner. Legal title went with, with the bank. And the Connecticut court said, look, as a practical matter, the bank is not the owner. The owner is the person who retains absolute right of redemption, retains equitable title, and for all practical purposes is the owner. And I think that's, that is the situation that we find ourselves in right now, where it would not have been clear to the lender that by granting this, that by giving this mortgage, that what they were doing is actually, was actually a conveyance. When the, and, and I think the rights of everybody would be fully protected if we said, you know, when you merge the two of them, when you go in and try to foreclose, that's when there's a full transfer or conveyance of, for purposes of Massachusetts law. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a change to a lien theory state. I'm asking for a very narrow rule.
Which would say the, what?
Which would say that a conveyance for purposes of a reverter provision does not take place until there is a transfer of both equitable and legal title.
And what would have happened, well, never mind. I'll ask Mr. Silverstein.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Silverstein?
Thank you, Your Honor. May I please the Court Jonathan Silverstein, Town Counsel for the defendant town of Dennis. If I may, Your Honors, I'd like to start with my brother's last point, which is, I believe in acknowledgement that he is in fact asking you to create new law, to create a new rule, as he would state it, that...
Let me, let me ask you about that, because are you familiar with, with the case of Uwer versus Hobbs?
When you asked my brother, I was, or you might ask me, Your Honor. I can't say that off the top of my head.
Let me read you what Chief Justice Shaw said in 1842, which appears to have been adopted by this court in Negron versus Gordon in 1977. "Hence it is that as between mortgager and mortgagie, the mortgage is to be regarded as a conveyance in fee, because that construction best secures him and his remedy and his ultimate right to the estate, and to its incidence, the rents and profits. But in all other respects, until foreclosure, when the mortgage becomes the absolute owner, I'm sorry, when the mortgagie becomes the absolute owner, the mortgage is deemed to be a lien or charge, subject to which the estate may be conveyed, attached, and in other respects dealt with as the estate of the mortgager. And all the statutes upon the subject are to be so construed, and all rules of law, whether administered in law or in equity, are to be so applied as to carry these objects into effect." Is that not still the law of this common law?
Your Honor, I think it might be, but the question here is whether in fact the Dennis Housing Authority entered into an arrangement whereby it transferred the property. And it did in fact transfer the property.
Justice Shaw says it did, as to the mortgage, as to the mortgager and mortgagie, as to them, it is a conveyance. But as to everybody else, which would include the town, it is a lien.
But, Your Honor, I think that rule, and I am familiar with Negron, and it has been cited in the case, the arrangement that is of concern to the town of Dennis is in fact the arrangement between the mortgager and the mortgagie, because it affects the rights of the town of Dennis.
But it affects it only upon, I mean, according to what, I mean, if this is true, upon foreclosure, then you're, then you would, then you could take it back, but you couldn't take it back until foreclosure.
Actually, Your Honor, the case law acknowledges that one of the advantages of, to a mortgagie in a title theory state is that prior to foreclosure, prior to sale, it may enter onto the property, for instance, and I do think that is a legitimate concern of the town. I think the fact is that Chapter 260, Section 35, the plaintiff is arguing that it wasn't clear or couldn't be clear to the mortgagie at the time of the, taking the mortgage, that the right of reverter would be triggered. I'll get to that in a moment. I don't think it had to be clear. I think if there was any question under case law, the burden was on citizens to clarify that. But under Chapter 260, Section 35, the term, I'm quoting, "The term mortgage includes any deed of trust or other conveyance. A mortgage is a conveyance."
But that statute was designed to protect debtors with regard to foreclosure, so of course it would include among the mortgages that are within the scope of that statute, that provision. It doesn't say that every, I mean, that doesn't say that every, every mortgage, that basically the common law of Massachusetts that was at least articulated well in 1842 has been changed.
But, but, Your Honor, respectfully, where the deed to the Dennis Housing Authority used the term of art, and that term of art is well-defined not only under Massachusetts statutory law, Massachusetts case law, Black's Law Dictionary states that the term transfer includes mortgage. Bear in mind, Your Honor, that the reverter provision used the term transfer or conveyance. So it's not only a transfer of the actual possession of the property that would trigger the reverter provision. It would be any conveyance, and under Massachusetts law...
But the mortgage was exactly what the town wanted to happen.
No, respectfully not, Your Honor.
You thought, you thought the, the housing authority was going to develop low-income housing with its own funds without getting, without getting a loan?
The housing authority has grants sources of funding, the housing authority has private sources of funding, the housing authority owns other properties from which it collects rents. Respectfully, Your Honor, the type of mortgage at issue here is precisely the type of issue that the Board of Selectmen may well have been concerned about, because what we don't want to happen is what my brother suggested, which is the housing authority defaults on a mortgage and either the property is foreclosed upon.
But they can't foreclose under this, even if he wins, they can't foreclose, because that would constitute a conveyance, both in title and in equity. So no one contends that they can foreclose without your blessing?
Well, but the, respectfully, the plaintiff has not conceded that. He refused to concede it a moment ago. And there would be other problems. They can enter onto the property, they can try to make changes to the property or to the contracts with tenants, they can try to attach the rents, which would affect maintenance of the property. What the town wanted to be able to do, and it's very clear from the reverter provision, is know exactly who's going to be running this affordable housing development, exactly how it's going to be run, and to have control over who's going to be doing that.
And I take it the process wasn't that onerous? It was just, it had to be submitted to the board for approval 30 days or something?
Exactly, Your Honor. And, and the board, for instance, may not have had an issue with a construction loan being secured by the property, but they may not have liked some of the other provisions in the construction loan, and that would have been well within the Board of Selectmen's rights to control exactly how this was going to be implemented, because bear in mind, Your Honor, they transferred this property for nominal consideration. They purchased it for nearly $800,000. And respectfully, I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen is the chief executive of the town of Dennis, implementing the town meeting's intent to have this run as an affordable housing development, would have every right to want to keep more control over that, just that sort of thing. And respectfully, there's nothing in the case law, there's, there's nothing my brother has cited, there isn't a single instance in which the court has carved out some type of contractual provision that references the term transfer or other conveyance that has said, oh, but we don't mean mortgage, where every statute, every case, every legal treaties explicitly acknowledges that when you grant a mortgage, you are conveying title in the property. Maybe not, and, and the appeals court had a nice discussion of this in its decision below. Maybe not the entire bundle of rights, but that's not the question. The Dennis Housing Authority didn't have the ability to grant an easement, it didn't have the ability to grant the fee, it didn't have the ability to grant a life estate, it didn't have the ability to grant anything without prior approval of the Board of Selectmen. They didn't get it. The, any title search would have disclosed this reverter provision, and respectfully, any conveyancing attorney should have looked at this and said, wait a minute, if we're going to be accepting a mortgage deed here, we better make sure that the Board of Selectmen has agreed to it, or at least confirm that that is not what was intended here. But it certainly was what was intended here. The, the reverter provision could have said, could have explicitly said, but the Dennis Housing Authority may secure a construction loan against the title to the property.
So then, this means then, that if you're correct, that every agreement which says, if you sell the property, something happens, means that any time there's a mortgage of the property, that provision is triggered, because you convey or sell the property when you do a mortgage?
I, I have not researched the term sell for this case, Your Honor, but if it says convey or transfer...
So whenever the word convey is used in any agreement that says, if you seek to convey, then certain rights may be triggered, that, that means any time you take a mortgage loan, those rights are triggered?
If the mortgage loan is, yes, if, if the construction loan is secured by the firm...
In every contract in the Commonwealth which uses that term and has that, then that's the consequence.
Yes, Your Honor. And I think it's consistent with the, with two centuries of case law, and I think it's consistent with us being a title state, because there's absolutely no case law that would suggest that for one purpose, a mortgage is a conveyance, but for any other purpose, it's not. Now, transfer of the property is a different issue. I think that's what the case, Your Honor, talked about is going to, and I think it's what the Red Rooster case and all the cases cited by my brother are going to as well, because what they're saying is, look, you can't say you're the owner of property such that you're entitled to, you know, damages or, or some tax exemption or anything else, simply because you own an interest in the property. If you're not in possession of the property, then you can't, for purposes of this particular statute, what those cases talk about is you have to look at the intention of the statute. But again, here, that's, that's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about some other term by which you, you back into a definition by looking at what the effect of the mortgage is. We're talking about a reverter provision that specifically says any transfer or conveyance. And those terms have to have separate meanings, because otherwise, they wouldn't have been separately called out. And I think it would be legitimate to say, or a transfer might include some sort of possession, although I would know, again, that Black's Law Dictionary specifically says that the term transfer includes a mortgage. It includes a mortgage.
So, so you're saying the conveyance is so clear as a matter of law that there's no need even for parole evidence to understand what the intent was with regard to this particular language here?
Certainly, I don't think parole evidence, when we're talking about interpreting the term in a deed, would be appropriate at all. And in putting that aside, I think that a term of art was used, a term of art that for centuries has been clearly defined and clearly understood in this common law, to include a mortgage. And so, yes, I, I don't think that, I, I think this was absolutely appropriate for a Rule 12 disposition. My brother did not reach in his argument, and I don't know if the court has any other questions on this issue, but he did not reach the issue of authority, which is briefed by both parties.
Whether this fit within the language of the reverter?
Exactly. Well, there are two issues. I, I think whether it fits within the language of the reverter provision is, is connected to what we've just been discussing. And I think it all hinges on whether or not a mortgage is part of a transfer. The issue I refer to, Your Honor, is whether or not the town meeting vote authorized the Selectmen to include the reverter provision. And I think that is easily disposed of. The town meeting vote did not purport to prescribe every, or proscribe every particular type of term that might go into a deed. Rather, it prescribed one term, and that one term is in fact included in the deed, and that is that it has to be used for affordable housing purposes, and if it ever stops to be used for that purpose, that it will revert to the town of Dennis. There's certainly nothing in the town meeting vote that in any way inhibits the town from including other terms that would be consistent with that vote, and certainly, this reverter provision is consistent with that vote. It, as both the length court and the appeals court acknowledged, was actually a term that was intended and had the effect of implementing and being consistent with the town meeting vote. And I don't think that there really can be any question about whether or not it was authorized by town meeting. The two cases cited by my brother, the Cape Cod Steamship versus Provinstown, that was a case where the contract entered into by the town of Provinstown was clearly inconsistent with state law, which said that the Marina had to remain public, and it specifically allowed for private ownership. Clearly, that was directly inconsistent. And the Lawrence versus, Stratton versus Lawrence case, where again, a city council vote required at least $50,000 of improvements, and the mayor took it upon himself to allow only $40,000 worth of improvements. I'm happy to rest on the briefs if the court doesn't have any other questions.
Can I just ask you?
Of course.
What, it's now 2010. I know it's not far the record, but what is the status of this land?
I believe it remains vacant, Your Honor. And I, I think that is something worth noting, that the property has never been used for the intent of the original purchase by the town or the convettance. So I, I think that is something worth noting, and it's not only because of this litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Silverstein.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor.
We can take. We'll have a short break.
All right.